Good evening. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Monday, August 14th, 2017 at 7:00. We are live and recording for rebroadcast. Can we start with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first agenda item is the acceptance of minutes from July 17th, 2017. Do I have a motion relative to those minutes?
I move we accept the minutes from July 17th as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, unanimous. Next thing we have is warrants and purchase orders, which I think is all set.
Yep.
Public communications. Lisa, do you want to take the first one?
Sure. Town of Pepperell Board of Selectmen for release, Pepperell Mass. The Board of Selectmen wishes to announce the following vacancies. Affordable Housing Committee at Large, Representative by Law Review Committee 7, Cable TV Advisory Committee 2, Council on Aging, Economic Development Advisory Committee Member, Defense Viewer, Finance Committee 1, First Co-IST Committee, excuse me, 2, Planning Board Associate Member, Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member. Letter of Application and or Citizen Activity Form should be submitted to the Board of Selectmen. Contact Board of Selectmen, One Main Street, Pepperell, (978) 433-0333.
Do we have any? I don't see any others on our list. Do we have any?
We have one for Veterans Breakfast. The next Veterans Breakfast will be September 9th from 8:30 till 10:00 in the morning. The sponsors for the next breakfast will be Representative Sheila Harrington and the Pepperell Family Pharmacy.
Excellent. Do we have any public communications from the audience? All right. We are moving at a good clip today. So the next thing we have is, Mark, your report.
Sure. I'd like to jump if I can to item number two. I'll come back to one. We have it with us this evening, two members of the leadership team that just joined us. Jeannie Savelle is new town clerk, seven-plus years as the Assistant Town Clerk, Calvin Sterling, and some really solid background in land use, which is good, on that side of the aisle upstairs. And welcome, Jeannie, if you want to stand up and say hello.
Yeah. Say hello. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm very happy to be here, and I'm settling in to the town, and I think it's beautiful and I love it.
Excellent.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
And the second appointment that I made under the charter is Bob Robert Kelly. Goes by Bob, a full-time building inspector. He joins us with over 30-plus years of experience in construction, and welcome aboard. And I know you got off to a running start with help of Sue Smith, and if you want to stand up and say hello, that'd be great.
Hi. I think I've met Roland and Melissa and Lisa. Nice to meet you tonight. I'm very, I'm honored, honored to be the first full-time building inspector in Pepperell and will work out for the town going forward. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome. Excellent.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome aboard. Going back to item number one, actually just got an email from Secretary Jay Ash, who visited with us on July 26th, on Wednesday, July 26th, and we had a very good roundtable discussion. I called it a summit workshop with the secretary. For those of you who do not, would like to know about Jay Ash, he comes with 14 years of experience as a town manager for a major city, the city of Chelsea. He was the first appointment made by the newly-elected governor, Charlie Baker, in January of 2015. The Secretary of Housing and Economic Development plays a major role in how really state government interacts with local government from cities and towns standpoint, and we had a very robust discussion, once again, looking towards the future. You might recall, and many do, that the state budget had just passed. Governor returned it to the legislature, so I thought the time was perfect to meet with the secretary. He'd like to come back out and do further work with us in the community and do some site work, particularly as it relates to the growth areas and areas of business, and also working closely with our partners at the Pepperell Business Association and with the Shobart Valley Chamber of Commerce. Major department heads were there, Ken Kalanowski, who just joined us, the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer. And I want to thank the Library Trustees for having us. It was a good discussion, and we intend to continue our conversations as it leads us towards other major grant opportunities in the future. The third item, my enrollment was there, representing the Board of Selectmen. That is my social identification.
It's all right. Don't worry about it.
There you go. Item number four was kind of an interesting situation. Fellow came in for a pool permit to visit with our building department. He stopped in to say hello to Peggy and myself, and his name is John Barnell. He runs United Installations, which is a really lively business of reuse of office equipment and furniture. He asked us if we had any needs. I said, "Take a look around." So he did that, and he came back and sent us some pictures. Peggy circulated them around, and right now we're looking at no-cost furniture being delivered to us. Other businesses, by the way, I would be remiss. Macy Biosystems, Lori and John Maciello have donated a number of pieces of equipment to the town as others in the future, and Mr. Barnell is picking up where Maciello's left off. We will be putting new, low-cost furniture, at no cost to the town, decent furniture, office equipment, and at the senior center, the Town Feds Office, the Treasure Collectors Office, and the Town Assessors. We hope that this is a beginning of a long-lasting relationship, once again, with the business that has a limited amount of storage space, and the town will take the equipment off its hands as needed on an as-needed basis. Peggy, I'm not sure if we got any other departments that need it.
Not that I really like that.
But we'll keep that offer out there, and once again, I estimate that the office furniture lease that I saw was in the vicinity of above $5,000 in value. Hard to tell until you actually see it, but just to give the board an update of some of the things that we've been doing to get, to really get some of the equipment updated, much of it has seen its best light cycles in the past, and in this particular case, hats off to Mr. Barnell. I asked him to be at the meeting tonight. He declined, but I'll have a nice letter of expression of our gratitude to him on account of for the board to look at tomorrow morning.
All right. All right, so the next thing, unless you have anything else to add there, is the appointment for election workers. Roland, do you want to take that?
Have a memorandum from Peggy Zola to the Board of Selectmen. Please act on the reappointments of the attached election workers, all with terms to expire August 31st, 2018. Precinct 1, Warden Leon Phoenix, Deputy Ward, Deputy T. Warden Michael Rico, Clerk Paul Spaugh, Deputy Clerk Virginia Bounty. Election Officers, remaining our election officers, you have Christine Benson, Lori Bulco, Bonnie Chase, Jenny Crispin, Judy Dalton, Lori Florno, Flornia Ho, Linda Harkins, Carol Hesse, B. Peasler, Mary Elise Herrera, Blaine Jefferson, Sheila Jones, Jennifer Colopolus, Jean Le Blank, David Peace, Patricia Wallace, Marilyn Trumbly, Margaret Scarsdale for Precinct 1. Precinct 2, we have Warden is Joan Lydic, Deputy Warden is Jennifer Griffith, Clerk is Diane Corsey. Election Officers, we have Gertrude Dapick.
Dapcek.
Dapcek, okay. Catherine Harris, Jennifer Kingsbury, Janice Nobbs, or Cobs, I guess, Janice Cobs, Fay McChristian, Thomas McGrath, Carol Quinn, Barbara Seager, Martha Spalding, Tara Stuckoo, Diane Temple, and Virginia E. Wellwood. For Precinct 3, we have Clerk is Jennifer Putnam, Warden is Diane Carr, Election Officers are Ann Adams, Scott Blackburn, Linda Burns, Kayleen Calutlito, Jim Collins, Lorraine Crispin, Phillips, Philip Durno, Mr. Philip Durno, Jen Gavrich, I'm going to butcher that one, Gavrich, Jim Hagbra, Ronald Carr, Patricia Blank, Doris Lovadas, Lois Libby, Virginia Maloney.
Maloney.
Malley, Teresa McParkland, Jean Navard, Susan Rouse, Janice Young, and Sharon King.
All right.
And will we appoint?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? No? All right, so the appointment is unanimous. All right. So the next thing we have is the appointing authority for the alternate to NIMCOG. All right. Now let me get to that. So this was on our agenda and was continued until today, as we had the addition of a second applicant. The initial applicant was Stephen Themelis of 4 Franklin Street, who is here, and that was a recommendation for appointment was made by Mark Andrews, and we had voted at our last meeting that Roland was the primary selectman rep, and we're looking for an alternate. Lisa wanted to put her name in the hat to be the alternate, and so that is what's on for tonight, who is being appointed as the alternate for NIMCOG. So since we have two applicants, I think what the easiest thing to do is to have each of you give a little bit about your background and why you want the appointment. Steve, I'm going to start with you, if that's okay?
Sure. I've been sitting on North Bellic Council of Governments on the Policy Board for the past 13 years, six years as a Planning Board Member, actually seven years as a Planning Board Member, six years as a Selectman, and basically the Policy Board votes in terms of what, you know, decision to be made by the North Bellic Council of Governments. And as you know, they handle regional planning, mailing, master plans, economic development, opportunities for different towns, communities, and nine towns represent one city of low, and things like Soul Spot, you know, technical assistance, district local technical assistance. And the main, the main thing I see there is as an opportunity for town for local initiatives is through the grants that come through from the state and federal governments that are funnelled through NIMCOG. So my, my belief is my goal is always to be cognizant and aware of those opportunities for the Town of Pepperell, so I can bring them forth to the Town Ministry and to Selectmen. So that's, that's my goal, and I'd like to continue that, you know, humbly, if the Select Board agrees to appoint me as an alternate for the next year.
Okay. Lisa, you want to give a restatement?
Sure. Everybody knows I was the town clerk for three years. I'm a paralegal by trade. I throw my name into the hat because I'm on the Select Board now, and I figured it would be a good way to get my feet wet and to learn something new.
Ever procedural question?
Sure.
So I know when we did the, the primaries, since it was an appointment of an actual Select Board person, which was the point, I know Roland participated in the vote and the discussion. I would assume Lisa would get to participate in the vote and discussion for this as well. I just wanted to make sure. I was making that assumption and...
This is the clarification the Board, we talked about this at the last meeting, that came from NIMCOG with regards to how the alternate interacts with regards to the appointment from the Board of Selectmen, Melissa, and also I see Chuck Wachovich is here from the Planning Board, who's the representative from the Planning Board. I just highlighted the section which I thought was most appropriate, and I stand by my recommendation. I work closely with Stephen Themelis. I work closely with Lisa on a number of projects. This is a key position that the town has been working closer with NIMCOG. It's time to move us forward with our Regional Planning Agency with regards to items, just so folks understand. We just got a district local technical assistance grant for $25,000 that's going to help us get to a master plan without having to spend the taxpayer dollars, and that in conjunction with another item that Stephen worked on, you know, obviously being a member of the Board of Selectmen and participating with NIMCOG, the Community Compact that Lieutenant Governor came out back in March to talk with us about Community Compact, we got another $20,000 from the state. So essentially, our master plan is fully funded, just about, with efforts that, you know, working closely with NIMCOG, and I think, you know, having years of experience on the Planning Board, as well as, you know, the work that he's done on the Board of Selectmen, uniquely qualifies him for the position.
Do you have any comments or questions for either of the...
Well, the only statement I have is that when I think about the alternative, the alternate, it's, would be either Chuck or myself could pull on this alternate if we're not there, but if I'm not there, it's primarily because I'm doing something with this board would prevent me from being there. So having another board member as the alternate wouldn't solve the problem. Not that I expect that we're even going to, this alternate isn't going to have an opportunity to do much over the next year period, because I anticipate making all the meetings. So that's one area that I'm a little, you know, being a little concerned about, is that if we've got two on the Board of Selectmen and we're doing board business, that's the reason I'm not there, then the alternate won't be able to be there either.
Don't they usually meet on Wednesday nights?
Right.
They do. We do, but sometimes we don't. Sometimes we do have meetings that are on other nights of the week.
That's my point, that I don't expect that this, whoever the alternate is, is actually going to be able to be required to do much, because I don't anticipate missing anything.
Unless we have a...
Yeah, unless we have a, we, as the Board has a meeting.
Okay. I will tell you, that was my biggest concern as well, in terms of the scheduling component, that the point of the alternate is to be able to manage it when the primary Select Board person isn't there, and that is the part that I had the hardest time with as well. The whole point is, chances are, unless you're on vacation or something, that the likelihood that you'll miss a meeting is more likely to be, because we have something that comes up if there's an actual conflict, and there is no way to resolve that if, again, we have two sitting members. The other component, it's, it's always great when you have multiple applicants that are very qualified for a position. It's better than having nobody apply for a position, so I'd much rather have two really great people to have to look between in terms of a position, but I think when I weigh the need for the alternate in terms of the whole conflict, but also Steve's years of experience, it just tips a little bit more in his favor in that regard, so...
What would bring continuity, if that person's required to do any action, he'll already have been working with them, so he's not going to come in totally cold.
Do you have any, Lisa, anything else that you want to add?
Nope.
Is there anything from the audience, anyone wants to add, any questions you want to ask? All right. Yep, go ahead.
Sure. Carolyn Ada, 19 Deerfield Drive. In regards to Mr. Themelis, I believe he owns a business in town, is that correct?
Does.
And my understanding is business is very busy, very much in demand, very hard to even get his time if you want to come and look at your house for, you know, any type of quotes or additions. With that said, you know, as an alternate, I think Lisa is really the more appropriate person, because she does have the availability. Secondly, Mr. Themelis was already on the Board of Selectmen. He already had some input and some association with North Bellic Council of Governments at this time. Because of the situation we got in with the regional communication, and no one's happy with it, we'd like out of it, I think it's time we have a set of fresh eyes, someone who doesn't have vested interests, doesn't have a business in town, isn't looking to kind of promote or, you know, do any personal gains, someone who is speaking for the voice of the citizens. In that case, I think Lisa is definitely, has shown that she is the voice of the people.
I appreciate your input, but to deny anyone who has a business in town and doing anything in town would pretty much exclude a fair number of people who work and volunteer in the town. There's a lot of business owners in town who have participation in different aspects of the town on various boards, and so to do that would preclude a very large population of the people that sit now.
Great, Melissa, I'm not saying to preclude them, I'm just saying as a choice, I think that Lisa is the better choice. And as far as having, you know, precluding businesses, we have gotten in trouble before from the Ethics Committee from violations where people have had a conflict of interest where they shouldn't have been. So let's not put ourselves in the position from the Department of Revenue where we have an ethical situation. So let's choose a candidate who doesn't have these situations.
I appreciate your input. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move we appoint Steve Themelis.
Oh, hang on. Chuck, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, Chuck Wachovich, a countryside rural, I was an alternate for, as appointed by the Planning Board while Steve was the same man on the Planning Board, and, you know, I think, you know, both candidates, as everyone said, are very viable candidates, but I have never known Steve to miss a meeting. You know, I have a business and I also have a full-time job, so I think I've missed more meetings as an alternate than Steve as a business owner in Pepperell, so, you know, I'm not sure that's a good reason. I do feel that having expertise in a situation like NIMCOG is extremely helpful. You know, Steve was very helpful with me when I started as an alternate member, and now I'm the Planning Board appointee, and I, you know, not that Lisa couldn't learn that, but that would give you three new people at NIMCOG without any knowledge of how it works. I think that would be a detriment for the town Pepperell, and not having accountability that we have with Steve. Again, both candidates are very viable. I think everyone's interested in the town Pepperell.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I move we appoint Steve Themelis as the alternate to NIMCOG.
Do I have a second? I will second out of necessity. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Opposed. All right, so it is a two-to-one vote. I really think that my pen is not working.
If I could just make a statement, I just think it's important to, I have no idea what the reference to the State Affairs Commission was. In my almost three years of tenure in town, there has been no reference to any matter with regards to State Affairs Commission, and Chuck, you have a business, and Stephen has a business, and Themelis, you have a business in town, Roland, you have a business in town. I have no idea what that reference is, and I think it's way out of line. It's inappropriate.
I'm going to, thank you. I'm going to move us on to the next item, just to get us going. We have about six minutes until we have to go into executive session. The next thing is the right of first refusal for the 61A for Dasa Lipazek, I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong, and Anna Quong for Maple Metal Farm, 13 Maple Street, map parcel 12-112-0. I want to start it. I'm hoping we can finish it before we can go into executive session. Who's here could come up, that would be great.
Hello.
Hello. Please introduce yourself.
Don Fitzgerald.
And for the record, tell us your relationship to this particular parcel, given that the right of first refusal is in the name of someone else.
Yes. So I, I've lived in Pepperell for 14 years at 98 Nashville Road, just sold the house, we're closing tomorrow morning. Came across Dasa and Ann, just met them passing through and talked to them about the property. I'm looking to build a home for my family. I put the property in my sister's name, because she's providing funding to purchase the land. She's also providing the funding to build the home, and then my wife is going to get a mortgage to pay her off once the house is finished.
So your role in essence is the purchaser of this particular property?
Right.
The intended purchaser of the particular property?
Correct. My wife will be at the end.
Okay.
And I'm basically doing the GC for it, the general contractor.
And it's a 3.85 acre section of land, and so in essence, the applicants have asked us to waive a right of first refusal relative to purchasing this particular piece of property, and, sorry, my brain just stopped there for a second. It's been a long Monday. So at this point in time, we're looking at, in essence, whether the town would exercise that right of first refusal or waive it, so that you can obviously proceed. So Lisa, do you have any comments you want to add, questions you want to ask?
I don't have any questions, but I do, I know the Fitzgeralds, and I know that this is a step in the right direction for their family, and it really, we really should, I stand by him, stand by both of them, and I support what they're trying to do.
Okay. Roland, do you have anything that you want to add? Any questions you want to ask?
Well, I don't see any reason the town would want this piece of property, and, you know, quite frankly, it's always nice to add another house on to the tax rules. I happened to be walking by, you were working there yesterday? Somebody was, yeah, I happened to be walking by, "Oh, that's where the house is going," because I wasn't quite sure which house, which side of the house was on.
We've been mowing and cleaning it up.
Yeah, so, yeah, I have no, I have no objections to this at all.
I too have no objections, even if I could fathom what we would do with it. It requires financing, and from a financial perspective, which is always near and dear to my heart, for better or for worse, even if we wanted to, we don't have the finances to accept any right of first refusal. So looking at it from a purely fiscal standpoint, I would have no problems waiving it as well. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Go, Phil.
Mr. Building or whatever transfer would have to go through all of the processes of town building.
Correct.
Yes.
Building, in fact, water sewer.
Absolutely. Be a normal transaction in that regard, yes.
Okay. The only thing we're doing is just giving up our rights to buy ourselves. Doesn't change any of the requirements for building.
All right, see, I know how high you people are. I don't want you to...
No. We are not superseding anything on your end, absolutely. Nope. They still have to come to you, Phil.
Okay.
Or Ken, depending on whether they're doing septic and well or down water and sewer. There you go. They got to see somebody.
I think he's on water and sewer. I'm getting bothered.
Yep, that's great.
So Ken, the guy in the back.
I'll have to talk to Ken.
There you go.
Everybody in town's department heads.
And do we have any feedback from our department heads relative to...
Yes.
Excellent.
If you scroll down, you're all there.
Yep. I'm just trying, I know it's in here, the question is, we have two little boxes. We have it in.
Assessors.
There we go. So I, yep, I know that our assistant assessor, or really don't like that title, our assessor, Morgan Bolger, does not have any issues, and the only thing she noted is that there is a conveyance tax that will get paid at the time of conveyance, which is normal and ordinary, a sheet issue in MLC, and that would take care of that. I believe Deb Nutter replied that there were no open taxes, so that's helpful. And from what I have here, I don't think any other department head has objected in any way to any of the exercising the right of first refusal. Do you want to read the comments from Paula?
From Paula? Yes. Good morning, Peggy. The Pepperell Conservation Commission has no interest in the Chapter 61A right of first refusal for the 3.85 acre parcel at Maple Metal Farm on Maple Street, which is being proposed as a single-family house lot. A pond is present on the proposed lot, which is a jurisdictional area under the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. All work proposed within 100 feet of the pond will require a filing with the Conservation Commission in addition to the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act. Pepperell Wetlands Protection bylaw requires there be a 50-foot-wide, undisturbed vegetated strip of naturally occurring plants, species maintained between the wetland resource area and the activities... and the activities as defined in the Wetlands Protection Act Regulation for lots created after May 6, 2002. The 50-foot buffer shall remain undisturbed from all activities, including excavation, grading, and tree removal. Please feel free to have the property owner contact me regarding any questions they may have. Paula Terrasi, Conservation Administrator.
And Steve Parker just said he has no objection, but there is a little note in here from Superintendent Landers. Lisa, do you want to read the note from Joan?
Sure.
I think it's the last thing in there.
Yes.
Towards the bottom.
Yes, it's the second to the last. It's in email.
Yes. The only downside with the electronics, you have tabs going across, just scroll.
Okay, from Joan Landers, to all of us, "Good morning, the Fitzgerald family is an inspiring and beautiful family filled with love, faith, and strong compassion for others. A true love story which started in elementary school in Pepperell. Any assistance the family could receive to expedite this process would be greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Joan Landers."
So technically, the school doesn't necessarily have an interest, but I thought that was a really sweet note, so...
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion?
So what would the motion be, Dirk?
To execute.
To waive it?
To decline.
The first right of refusal?
Yes. Yep, you could do it in the positive or negative, either way.
I move, the positive or negative.
That's right.
I move, now you threw me off by saying that.
Right.
I had already formulated what I was going to say. I move that we waive the first right of refusal option for the parcel of 3.85 acres, was it 13 Maple?
Yes.
13 Maple Street in Pepperell. You want the deed number?
Sure.
Let's see, registry of deeds in the books, 1996, page 547. For the current owner's title, see deed 68349, page 543.
Excellent. And just to clarify, the, a portion of the lot will remain in 61A, about 20 acres. So, do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Happy building.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. You're very welcome. All right, it is 7:33-ish, we are past 7:30.
Just real quick, Melissa.
Yes.
So just to give the Board and the listening audience an update, the North Middlesex Regional School District Regional Agreement Subcommittee met last week. Melissa and I attended as the designees to this group. And we organized, and we have a meeting coming up. I got an email from Superintendent Landers late this afternoon that she has representatives from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education coming out, I think on the 21st.
Yep.
So by way of, just once again, just reporting back through the Board.
The Sign and Safety Committee, if that's relatively quick, rather than making people wait, we should probably do that first, since that's the last thing on the agenda relative... I don't want to make everybody sit here and wait for us to go in and then come back if we only have one other agenda item other than the executive session.
This is, I think, a very commonsensical thing to get.
It'll take me longer to set this up.
You can take all the time you need, I just don't want to make people sit here, have you wait for us to go out and come back. We like that. Yes. Can you? All right, I will turn, so that I'm not in your way.
What you see there, that's a photo of Main Street aerial photography from just east of the Rotary down to Donald, as you'll see is on the far right-hand side. In response to the recent development, the Dunkin' Donuts, the Sign and Safety Committee was approached, number one, for a parking issue on the police station property, proper, which has subsequently been posted now for official police parking only. What's happening is that people are intending to use the other practice fields and parking in the police station and all over the place.
I'm not even sure that you should have to post signs for that, it should be obvious, but...
Before Dunkin' Donuts, they were able to use Sheldon Law Office after hours, and that wasn't a problem. That we think will change, given the hours of operation at the new Dunkin' Donuts. Coupled with a concern that there could be traffic queuing and parking and so forth, overflow parking should it come to be for the Dunkin' Donuts, we just thought it was a good move to post essentially from, you can see, just west of the first entrance to the police station parking lot, to just past what will be the exit lane for Dunkin' Donuts as no parking on that side of Main Street. Currently, there are no parking restrictions on Route 113 or Main Street. So we just thought that was a good preemptive safety move to not inhibit the potential ingress or egress for emergency vehicles in the police station, large vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. So it's approximately 500 feet inclusive of the actual curb cuts. So it's not a very long no parking zone. Time will tell, does it need to be expanded, does it need to be removed? That would certainly be your call, our recommendation. And that would, no way, I would think, impose any restrictions on any future plans for the corridor. It would just be another parameter to have to deal with. That's it.
All right.
We need to vote to authorize them to create this.
Correct, and yeah.
So I'll move that Board of Selectmen authorize the Sign and Safety creating no parking zone located on the map, approximately, you gave us the directions, the dimensions, but covering in front of the police station across to where the new Dunkin' Donuts location would be.
Just before, I ask for a second, do we have any questions or comments or anything for Ken? Lisa, do you have any questions or comments? Do you have any questions or comments? Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
Dave Lavender, 19 Deerfield Drive, just two that occur since the state highway, does the state have any say in this? And since somebody's investing in Dunkin' Donuts, isn't anticipating this happening, could that have repercussions on the town further on down the road? I want to think about.
I'm assuming they got notice relative to the hearing tonight, the owners, the Catalano company, relative to tonight, just from a general perspective of the owner?
Well, these issues came up at Planning Board and also the Science and Safety, it's not the first time.
Let me just get a person, it's a state numbered route, no longer state highway.
There you go.
Right, it's a town highway.
It's town control, so that goes away.
But just, I understand, but I'm asking a specific question. I'm assuming they got notice of tonight's meeting in the general sense, aside from all the planning and all that, that, did we give them any kind of notice or anything for here?
They answer my phone calls.
Okay. So obviously, it was a public meeting.
But Mark's point too, this...
It was part of the Planning Board, that much I know.
It was brought up, and this specific scenario was brought up as a potential scenario during the review process.
Phil, just one second. Chuck, was there any, in the planning component of it, was there any grant of any of the permits relative to the project that specifically said that you guys had issues with parking in that particular area?
We had a number of discussions about parking congestion with police station or the entrance of where Dunkin' Donuts is.
Yeah.
That was one of the major changes that the Planning Board recommended, in that they wanted a two-way in and out, and it was required that they only have one way in and out, so that it didn't deter any traffic. So I think this is just, you know, no parking zone is further validation of the concerns about the entrance to the police station in other areas in that location.
Okay, so there's no surprise in that regard. Okay, Phil, go ahead.
I just heard him say this is no longer a state road. Correct?
Correct.
Statement I always get when I talk about a light at the town hall is, we can't do that, it's a state road.
I'm telling you that.
You.
I beg to differ, sir.
Oh.
I have never issued that statement.
You can say that, but I've asked for a light at this town hall, I don't know how many years, and every time it's a state road, we can't do that.
No, I've told you numerous times, it does not meet the federal warrants for a signalsized intersection, but I've never claimed it's a state highway. There's a distinct difference there, very big difference.
Well, we don't have to notify the state that we're doing this.
Absolutely not.
All right. So you made a motion. Sorry, I paused you for a second there. There are seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Just wanted to make sure we give people a chance to ask questions.
One more question.
Ask in a higher free vote, yeah, go ahead.
I want to ask the cheaper question. What's the parking violation if you park here? Park.
I believe it's 100.
That's all?
Yeah.
You may want to increase that.
You may regulate that a little bit. What's the violation for a handicap pocket space?
100.
Well, you need to watch those places downtown. You're parking all the time. I go down there to park my car and somebody's there. Especially that one at the barber shop. Saturday and Sunday when they're going to the restaurant.
Gotcha.
He's talking about real spare. There's no place to park, so they park in their handicaps.
All right, so that is everything that is on our agenda, other than the executive session. So do I have a motion relative to that?
Yes, you do.
Excellent.
I move Board of Selectmen going to executive session under Part 3 to discuss strategies in respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of a public body, and the chair so declares further, the chair declares that the Board will return to open session for the purpose of taking an action for any matters pertaining to the Lex Best Group and Operation Delphagaugh versus Melissa Zanacocas at Paul Land Court Appeal of Special Permanentships.
All right, do I have a second? All in favor? Oh, actually, roll call, so roll call.
Roll call vote. Aye.
Aye. All right. It is 8:15 on August 14, 2017. We have come back into the regular session, Board of Selectmen meeting, and I think at this point, we have no further business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. All right, everybody thinking, have a great night.